Good evening. If we could call this meeting to order, if we could please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. Thank you.
So first up, we have adoption of the agenda. I've been advised I do have two items to add. The first one will be item 12.3, which is changes to the organizational structure. And the second will be 12.4, which is a planning matter. Now, we will need to vote to get these on the agenda.
Get a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Any questions, comments? Right, if we could vote. That was unanimous, thank you.
Next, we move to adoption of the minutes. On item 3.1, on page five, you'll find minutes from our April 2 regular meeting.
Any errors or omissions? I actually just noticed one. It's on the voting records for the Kinsman Home Lotto lot. It says eight in favor and one absent. It should be seven in favor and one absent, just a minor thing.
Do we have one person away?
No. We had councillor McIntosh away and then I excused myself.
Okay.
Any other?
Make that amendment.
Okay.
Okay, moving along now to presentations. Our first presentation is item 4.1, and it's the Mayor's Poetry Challenge. And we have Isra Ahmed here, who is a psychology student at the Medicine Hat College, to read to us a couple of her poems.
Welcome, Isra. So you have the floor, and you are going to do two original poems that you wrote yourself?
Yes.
Yes, okay. You may start anytime you like.
My first poem is titled "Obsession." I have this obsession, an obsession with lines, lines that never touch but continue on for hours, days, months, years, and keep me obsessed with connections, connections that I can't make, making me frustrated, frustrated with the living, living with their fake smiles and cliches, their assumptions, judgment, inventions. I have this obsession. My second poem is titled "If I Sleep With My Eyes Open." If I sleep with my eyes open, maybe I'll be less afraid, maybe I'll finally get to see those monsters in my closet, and maybe I'll chase away the voices in my brain. Maybe I'll see in you me, in the shattered mirror and broken glass. Maybe I'll feel complete, maybe I'll finally pass. The test that I've been dreading, the test that makes me shake, the test of life that may not even be worth it, but maybe if I sleep with my eyes open, I'll be less afraid. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions of our poet? Councillor Samraj?
Thank you. Those were beautiful poems. How long have you been writing poetry?
Since I was in high school. I started around, well, like for leisure at least, since I was in high school. Had to do a couple of things in junior high for schoolwork and stuff, but I didn't really enjoy that as much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Dumanowski?
Well, thank you, Isra. Takes a lot of courage to come in front of council and the community, and sure, your personal works of art, they were very reflective pieces and enjoyed them tremendously. I guess my question is, every time somebody publishes a piece of work or there's a new album out there, the question they often get asked is, what inspired you? Was there an inspiration for your poetry, or was it just something that came from within?
There wasn't really inspiration for these. I wrote them a few years ago, and I was going through a really tough time then, and I just, it was a reflection of myself at that time.
Well, even with my earlier comments, it's doubly so that you came here before us and shared with everyone in the community your feelings, and it probably will inspire many others to do the very same, so well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Friesen?
Well, thank you. I don't have a question, but I do want to thank you. I was really taken with your poems, actually. I don't always love poetry, but I really liked yours. They spoke to me in a way because of your delivery. It wasn't just the writing, it was that you spoke about them from your heart, like they were just, they were speaking to your inner self, and some of your struggles and struggles many other people have as well. So I found both your writing and the delivery of your poem was particularly compelling, and I really thank you for that.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Thank you. Councillor McIntosh?
Thanks, Your Worship. So I'm currently teaching a poetry unit to a group of grade six students. Would you consider coming into my class and spending 20 minutes talking about your experiences with poetry and maybe reading a few poems with them?
Sure, definitely.
Okay. I am going to get your contact information and get ahold of you. Thank you.
That's a real compliment, because he has never asked me to do that.
Feel honored then.
I'm just at, maybe I'm just at that. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Turnbull?
Yes, thank you, Worship. The reason is, you read great poetry, but I don't remember you writing any great poetry, so there is a difference here.
Okay, I think that's, if we get a motion for reception? So moved?
Second.
Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you very much.
Moving on now to our next presentation is from the Destination Marketing Organization 2017 Annual Report. We have Jace Anderson here, who's the executive director. This relates to item 7.1 in your packets on page 27.
Welcome, Mr. Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. The slide deck is turned on, which means the people who manage the technology know exactly what they're doing, and I do my best to stay out of it. First half, first off, thanks. Greetings on behalf of the board of directors that I represent in the organization I have the opportunity to be a part of, Worship, council, friends and residents in the community. Thank you for this opportunity for us to celebrate the 2017 year in report. We've had the opportunity now to deliver on the Tourism Medicine Hat brand on behalf of yourselves, on behalf of this community that we call home. For now, we're in our fourth year. This report relates to the third year, 2017. I love it. I placed this file here right out of the gate because it speaks to us as an organization very, very intrinsically. It gives us a centering in regards to what we're doing and the impacts and the breadth of some of those impacts. As we build a place that people want to visit, that's an important statement for us because it drives us from the marketing aspect to the destination development mindset, which is a very important place for us as an organization to evolve to. Might not be formally where we were asked to go, but it's very clearly strategically where we need to be to do our best job and fulfill our best role for the community. As we build a place people want to visit, what we're doing is seeing a place that people want to live. As they want to live in a place, they want to work in a place. And where people want to work, business needs to follow. And so that space there gives us that sense and that beautiful circle. It's graphic, it's full color, it's all the things that are very close to my heart. Our mission and vision is very simple and it is straightforward. It is, in essence, that we are an industry-led not-for-profit, and that our role is to strengthen Medicine Hat's destination awareness through this tourism profile that we pour ourselves into, to be that trusted partner. The reason this is the slide here for us, this is very clearly a beautiful shot of one of our most Instagrammable walls in Medicine Hat. This is a screen capture from a video that we partnered with a number of stakeholders over December, and in January, we had a traveling videographer come into town and produce this 49-second piece of creativity. The essence was what we were attempting to achieve, where we were going with this, is we asked everybody involved, what would a 49-second love letter look like visually? What would it look like if we just told our community and told potential visitors to our community what it was about Medicine Hat in that moment that we just had an absolute love or passion for? We get to that place by recognizing the extensive research and community engagement that led us to the point where we understand our brand pillars, and that is very clearly this emerging sense of creativity and culture that is identified or illustrated in our lives and in the work around us by Medelta, by the longstanding Jazz Fest and the Winter Folk Festival. It's by the number of artisans and galleries and moments of expression that are in our community, both visual and auditory, like we just heard prior and elsewhere. It's something that's very rich in our community, and it's something that we, as residents, recognize about ourselves. It's clearly something that regional neighbors also recognize about us. So that's one of those brand pillars that lead us in our work. The second is that outdoor experience, and that's the River Valley. It's the fact that we're on this confluence of Highways 1 and 3. It's the fact that we have today 11 degrees above and dry roads while I'm on the phone talking with counterparts in Calgary and Edmonton, and there are under eight inches of snow. And it's because our motocross last week opened up for the beginning of the season and saw 80 riders from all over the province because they're hungry for an opportunity to participate, and in their hometowns, there's still snow. It's that outdoor experience. I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to spend a week in Regina. We had a trade show booth. It was the first time that I'd had the opportunity to go there. Stakeholders in our community present there on a regular basis, and they asked if Tourism Medicine Hat could set up as a part of their space, and so we did. This here is in front of me for two reasons. One was that in the display space we had, we put up these photographs, a number of photographs of the community, banners and the like. This was one of them. And throughout the trade show, that was the one that drew the most commentary to me. People would beeline through the crowd and say, where are you from? I'd smile and say Medicine Hat. They'd say, okay, okay, so explain the brewery's tour to me. Tell me more about that. And it was fascinating how that drove people to a moment of response. And the reason why I think that's compelling is Visa and the industry a couple of years ago did some very compelling research. And what they told us was that the Canadian traveler, for every dollar they spend in accommodations, hotel, motel, Airbnb, for every dollar they spend in accommodations, that traveler spends on average 87 cents on food and entertainment. And so it's an incredible recollection. Now, it's not news for all of us, because lo and behold, when we travel, we also love to eat. It's something we do, but not just by necessity. It's because we have the opportunity to experience something new, to experience something local, or just to celebrate the fact that we're traveling, whether it's for leisure, or sport, or business, or otherwise. So the data point was for every dollar, 87 cents. That's big, and it speaks to the breadth of the industry that we have the opportunity to speak for. 115 kilometers of trail, this is still a central part of clearly our outdoor experience and a central part of the sorts of things that we're messaging when we're communicating with nearby and regional neighbors. This is fascinating for me because of the data point that we reflect here, and that is that 85% of the room nights, visitor nights in Alberta last year were by Albertans, which speaks to the incredible volume of in-province travel and the fact that while reaching far for travelers is important, and those net new dollars are integral to the province's economy, one of the things that we recognize is that our regional partners and communicating to the Calgary market and the greater southern market is very critical for the work that we do. Of the 85%, an additional 10% is all other Canadians. The last 5% is made up of U.S. and international. Awareness, consideration, and conversion across the bottom, again, full color because we can in this day and age, awareness, consideration, and conversion are a bit of a centering guide for us as a team. And the reason we do this is because we recognize clearly that conversion, where commerce takes place, is where our stakeholders are best or most uniquely positioned to benefit, which means, and we go back to my comment about mission and vision, it means we play intentionally in the awareness and the consideration space. It's common sense, but if they're not aware of us as a community for what we offer and what they can benefit from spending the time here, then they're not likely to consider it. When they're aware of it, we open up the opportunity for them to give consideration, and it's building on consideration where we see conversion, where they start to spend additional time and additional dollars in time in our market. The reason we use that graphic is because it clearly illustrates two things. One, we are, as I'm sure you all are, really excited for Cirque du Soleil coming to Medicine Hat and for the impact that they're already having and will have. I recall a couple of years ago when I was very new in the DMO space, talking with our counterparts in Calgary, and they were sharing rather giddily, I will say, no pun intended, because of the show in Calgary for Cirque was the horse show. But they were very excited that their market would receive a Cirque du Soleil show, and it meant something to them as residents and to them as an industry. And so just a couple of years later for us to see this happening is very exciting. The other thing that this does, those are screen captures from our website in its mobile space. And so what you see is the top and the bottom of the same page. When people are searching our events calendar, are visiting our website, are finding us through social media or other paid measures, they're finding that Cirque du Soleil show. When they find that on their phone, they have the opportunity to visit the Canalta Center website, to click a button to call or to get tickets directly, and it jumps directly to Canalta's page. What we do is track and measure the number of times people click the phone button. In a mobile space, you have the opportunity to click the phone, and we believe that's a clear indication of interest. You're going to call the Canalta Center. You're not calling us at the visitor center, you're calling the Canalta Center. And we saw improvement in the number, the sheer number of click-to-call that we saw being generated on our website, which is something that we drive through the consideration directly to our stakeholders. In September of 2017, City of Medicine Hat's council voted unanimously to support the formation of the Sport and Event Council. And through ongoing stakeholder consultation and engagement, the council is formed, strategy is being defined, and immediate returns are being laid out. Now, this is a review and a look back on the 2017 year, so I'm not here to give any nods to anything that might be right around the corner. It's certainly not my place, but it's clearly an aspect that, as a DMO, from a destination marketing organization standpoint, our society greatly appreciates that the stakeholders took the opportunity to invite both the Medicine Hat Game Society and Tourism Medicine Hat to the table to be involved and to have a hand in forming this for the community. And it speaks, I think, to a realization of that mission and vision that our board set several years back, to be that trusted partner, to take that opportunity to lead, and that speaks to that. Regional map, regional collaboration. One of the things that we had heard loud and clear over the last number of years, and frankly, throughout, has been that there is at no time an ideal place for us to be in a silo. That's not what we're doing. We're not trying to, as a tourism entity or as a community, ignore all others. So what we did, it was very strategic, and we're very pleased with the response. We went last year and we met with those partners that are listed there. There's two counties, several towns, Alberta parks. We sat down with them, and we defined for them that outdoor experience, that brand pillar for us as a community, and we talked about regional alignment. Now, these are things that are important to their communities and their spaces very clearly, but what we saw was an opportunity for all of us to gather and pool our financial effort and our intellectual effort so that we could be aligned. What that generated for us was a matching pool of money that we all contributed. Travel Alberta added to that pot, and in fact, the Economic Development Alliance recognized a number of their partners already in the conversation, so they added money to the mix. And we produced this web space map as well as a printed product. The intent is to capture the sheer volume of travelers moving along these highway corridors and give them a compelling lure, a compelling reason to linger and spend a little bit more time coming through our region. And so that's what that map does. I'd be more than happy to provide more context there if you'd like, but... We also saw from an awareness and consideration standpoint, a further increase in the volume and the distribution points for our Experience Medicine Hat guides. So we saw an increase from 18 to 24 locations in British Columbia. Now, when I define locations, what I'm talking about are visitor information centers or accommodations, major points where the traveler is passing through, and so we can be front and center in that space. We increased by 14 locations in Alberta, up to 142. We increased one in Saskatchewan. We had a great increase in Montana. We added two there as well. Now, in Montana, it's quite often chambers of commerce and community centers and those sorts of things, but it just speaks to the openness for the quality of the magazine that the team puts together and the opportunity we have to help the nearby traveler understand that we are a compelling reason to stop and to linger well beyond the fact that they're navigating through us on the Trans-Canada irregardless. I love that word, because it doesn't exist. Click one more time. This was an opportunity for me to let you know that our guide distribution is up. Our VIC numbers are holding steady, and in fact, in Medicine Hat, they increased. We saw 48,500 travelers through our visitor information centers last year. Last year was the first year that we added a third visitor information center. So we have our year-round visitor information center up by the teepee. We have the fee-for-service contract with the Ministry of Culture and Tourism for the Walsh Alberta Center, which is May-long to September-long. And then last year, we had an opportunity where we had a few dollars in our budget. We were the recipient of a provincial grant delivering innovative travel council, and we brought that grant money with our money to both the City of Medicine Hat and the City Centre Development Agency, who contributed and supported and allowed us to then lease a pop-up space in the heart of downtown and have travel counselors onsite through the peak summer months. And it allows us to reach a traveler that is wholly unique from the travel council experience. Let me give you that space or that sentiment. When we see visitors on the Trans-Canada Highway where two of our three visitor centers are, they're very clearly in travel mode. They likely see themselves as a tourist. The reality is, if 85% of our room nights in Alberta are coming from other Albertans, then a significant portion of our visitor in Medicine Hat, I would define them as VFR, which is an acronym, and this industry loves acronyms, but it means visiting friends and relatives, VFR. And when I travel to visit a friend or a relative, I'm there for a day or a week or a month, God help us all, but I don't feel myself as a tourist. I'm not likely to go to a visitor center, say, hey, what should I do this weekend? I'm there for friends or for relatives or for family. So we don't see those people, and yet that's a significant element of who we see in our community from an impact standpoint. Being in the pop-up allowed us to see those people because we're right downtown, we're on Second Street, we're just off the sidewalk, we're very visible, and it allows them to, as they're meandering, to then connect with us. We had an opportunity to, instead of counseling people where to stay or how to get there, because they already had that worked out, they're talking with our travel counselors about what should I do for the next two hours? How should I connect with the trails? Where should I eat? That's a whole different impact, a whole different conversation for our travel counselors to have, and it increased our exposure. So we're very excited to be driving towards that third visitor center again this year, although granted, there's no grant available for us. We'll have some money to spend, I'm sure. I didn't put it on the slide, but this is the opportunity for comments or questions. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Councillor Hirsch?
Well, Your Worship, I just want to thank Jace individually. You've been a very good beacon for our community in regards to tourism, listening to you on the radio as I do every month. You know, I really just enjoy the data collection you do that's pertinent. There's a big difference between data collection and, in my mind, very pertinent details that really give me some pause to think. I got to give you an anecdote. I was actually downtown at a coffee shop, ran into a couple from out of town. They were absolutely enamored with our downtown, so hooray for that, but they loved the pop-up info because they were meandering, and they just said, you know what, let's go in, this is really neat, it's quaint. And they ended up taking some bikes, and they rolled through downtown Medicine Hat and area, so that was a brilliant, they thought that was such a great idea. Medelta, all those things that's, you know, for us as citizens of Medicine Hat, I don't think we really true, truly understand the level of wonderment that we have in this community. So thank you for always putting that flashlight on that. Having said that, I think we are all salesmen for the City of Medicine Hat, so when you go to your visitors, friends, families, you know, I think we should all feel a bit of celebration in the fact that we've got a wonderful community. So by your leadership, I want to thank you, but I actually do say, take some of your data, and I actually use that when I talk to some people, and some of the little known wonders that we have. So again, not a question, but just a thank you. So, well done.
Thank you. Councillor Varga?
Through the chair, to Jace, as usual, lots of passion. It's nice to see that because of what we are and who we are in Medicine Hat, and you take it to another level all the time whenever you talk about our great community and what you're doing actually for the community to make it better, to make more people realize what we have here. On the other note, your report, full of information and stats, that's great for everyone to look at to see how valuable tourism is in our market. And the other part I want to thank you for is allowing us as a sports council to come into your group and work as a partner to be part of that, because the collaboration part, I think, is very important, where something that I might know in the sports world, I don't know in the marketing world. And I think when I told you guys that sports tourism is worth $6.5 billion in Canada, a little bit of that comes our way because we usually host a lot of sporting events within our community, and we're going to pass it on to other events also in the cultural aspect of it. And I think down the road, this is going to be a partnership that benefits in many ways, and I believe it's going to be a win-win for all the members that are involved. It's going to take some time till we find out the right path and where we want to go and to get buy-in from the partners and the shareholders that are in our community to say, hey, what are you going to do for me? Or what can you do for me? And I think that's going to take some time, but I think in the long run, we're going to have a great organization and a great help, a great place for people to get help to run some major events within our community. So thank you for all that, and look forward to working with you guys in the future and for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McIntosh?
Thanks, Your Worship. Mr. Anderson, as always, excellent presentation. You are always a wealth of knowledge, but I have a question that relates to where we've come from and I guess where we're going. What do you see as the biggest gap in our community from a tourism perspective in terms of the people driving through? What might we be missing?
The biggest gap? I did hear in the first week or month of my role with the Destination Marketing Organization, this is four years ago, I did hear that that gap was a waterslide. I did hear that. I'm not sure if that's the answer. What I see is a combination. We formed as a destination marketing organization, but very quickly recognized that as marketers, what we need to do is clearly identify and articulate what we have to market, okay? The ability to market is inconsequential if we don't recognize what we have. And Medicine Hat has some remarkable things to market. It helps us from a development standpoint, frame our thinking process to the tourism node concept. It's that space where a traveler can go to, not for a single reason, but go to a space and have a series of experiences, a combination of time spent. The most obvious would be the city center. There's a node element to that. They can eat, they can have an experience, they can visit the esplanade, they can see the river firsthand, and the list goes on. The second is, from a node standpoint, from our perspective, the historic Clay District, where Medelta is right now. Now, both of those are at different points in their timeline or in their trajectory to be a tourism node, but as a group, one of the things that we're talking about and clearly recognizing is that we need to find continued ways to foster and to encourage clearly recognizing is that we need to find continued ways to foster and to encourage stakeholder engagement in those spaces. So an example of that forward-thinking is that we now have on our team somebody who works alongside of me, and we focus specifically on destination development. And we have, through a series of webinars, brought in some Roger Brooks, a downtown specialist who has been speaking for thirty or more years, was extremely excited that Canadian Badlands saw fit to accept our conversation point and invite Roger Brooks to speak at the Badlands Conference that was held here in Medicine Hat just recently. That was pivotal. That was a pivotal moment for us, because that was the speaker in the room, talking about his passionate perspective on downtown development, on city center, from a tourism node standpoint, but not just for the visitor, for the local resident as well. And the reason why it was pivotal is that we had not just tourism guy at the table. There were people in the room who afterwards said, we should talk more about this. He had some fascinating things to say. And so we are collectively in that stage of conversation with a number of stakeholders. So it's destination development, and it's having the capacity and the resources to invest in those spaces, because back to that first colored graphic, that wheel of sorts, as we develop a place people want to live, then they want to work there. When they want to work there, business needs to be there, and when business is there, people will travel there. It's that cycle, but from a different entry point. The second thing I'll mention, which might sound almost as glib as my waterslide comment, but isn't, it really isn't, is that the river is incredibly important to us, and we continue to talk and to look and to navigate, pun intended, new ways when we can see either people being on the river or being in and around the river. And I was walking through one of the halls in City Hall recently, and I was compelled to stop and pull my phone out and find my camera, and I took a photograph of a picture we've probably all seen at least once. It was the S S Medicine Hat paddle wheeler. I think it sailed in the aughts in the twenties and sunk somewhere downriver in the twenties or the thirties, and it's this beautiful photograph, black and white, on the wall. And if I had a few extra dollars in my pocket, I'd put one right outside your chambers, and I would allow people to climb on in the morning and climb off, and then climb on again in the afternoon and climb off. And we'd wander up to Police Point or beyond, and we'd wander back to Echo Dale and beyond, and we would have a busload, every hour, of people lined up waiting for that kind of experience. Now, that's a, that might not be the answer to the question you asked, Counselor, but nonetheless.
Counselor Friesen?
That just displays your passion about the topic, Jace. You can just go off and talk about everything else, that's wonderful. I just have a quick question. By the way, great, great presentation. You always get us all worked up and ready for the next tourist season, and that's wonderful. I'm just, well, actually, I shouldn't say that. It's tourist season all year, isn't it?
It is.
Yes. Anyway, my question is about the other Destination Marketing Organizations. I know that you are only responsible for this one, but how do you work together so that you maximize the, some of the benefits and the initiatives they've taken, and they learn from yours, and you learn from theirs? And how do you link together so you see sort of a continuous movement of tourists in the province? Because people, in my experience anyway, they may not only like to travel here, but they will travel here if it's part of another piece, or the other way around.
Excellent question, thank you. It speaks to my comment earlier in regards to the sense of silo and the fact that we're intentionally and actively looking to break that down. It's recognizing that the tide floats all boats, even paddle wheelers. It's recognizing that we, as a continuity, from a community standpoint, up and down these highways and throughout the province, we can all benefit and we're not fighting one another for that traveler, if that makes sense. So we've done a couple of things ourselves right out of the gate. Early on in our role, what we began to do was host E D luncheons, and we would invite the counterparts from Brooks and Newell County, from Lethbridge, from the Cypress Hills Destination area just over the Saskatchewan border, and we would get together and we would talk about what we were learning and the travelers that we're seeing and what we're doing in the coming year, and we'd look for those moments where we could work together, because there is very clearly a sense of, with our travelers in particular, we're seeing them en route. And so if we can provide for them a compelling reason to spend that time here, the nature of travel today is, the majority of those travelers have that time, which is fascinating, because it's not at all what my father told me, when he told me to be quiet and get back in the car. We were getting in the gas station, we were leaving town. I wanted to stick around wherever we went, and apparently, that's not what we did back in the day. But we do now, and that's what we're seeing. We're seeing the fact that we can do that. And so when we understand who is visiting Newell, and we understand what they're doing throughout the Greater Badlands region, or even what they're doing in some of the other centers, Calgary and Edmonton for like, then there's a natural exchange and a sharing of information. That happens. The next thing that we have done is, over the last six months or so, we have gotten together with a number of the other D M Os in the province, and we've made intentional effort to create an advocacy voice that is collective. Alberta is one of the only provinces, if not the only province in Canada, that does not have an industry voice at the provincial level for tourism. And so we've been, we've been driving that recognition of advocacy that speaks to the impact of the industry, the fact that in Alberta, we have thirty-four thousand businesses and two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand jobs, give or take, on both of those, because I don't have those numbers in front of me. But it's recognizing that the tourism industry is greater than that one place in each community that gets people really focused, and then all of the accommodations that people stay at when they're going to that one place. It's this breadth of industry, and it goes back to the Visa data, the fact that when a traveler travels, they also eat and enjoy themselves. And all of those dollars are net new dollars in our community, which is a tourism dollar. So we're constantly looking to build those lines of relationship, from an informal and a formal standpoint, so that when they figure out what they're doing, they're doing it well, we get to copy them really quickly. The beauty is, what we've seen already over the last couple of years, is some of these other markets are recognizing some of the things we've done as a team, and they copy them really quickly, whether it's the pop-up or the mobile visitor center on our tricycle from two years ago. It's those sorts of things.
Counselor Dumonoski?
Thank you very much. Jace, I had the privilege of hearing you, of course, at the committee level, and I'm always careful about how much I repeat here at the council table, but I think for the benefit of the community, and it's really to celebrate the good work that you and your group do. One of the things that I touched upon at the committee level is that I think how you present tourism is very unique, and I think that's what really I value, and I think is long-term going to serve the tourism sector of Medicine Hat better in the future, is that you create experiences around the tourism thing. Now, that's not new, but you take it to a whole new level, whether it's the coffee tour or the bike initiation of bikes and on and on and on. I mean, you've shared many of them over the years. You're creating these experiences, these little tours that went around that you mentioned at the committee level. They might be small, they might even be grassroots, but at some point, they catch on, and I know at the committee level, you mentioned that there's a request to repeat some of these things. So this is how you create the tourism experience. I firmly believe, as you said, that the majority of the people, I'm not surprised to hear, eighty-five percent of them are from within Alberta, that are staying in our local and elsewhere. When I travel with my children and we go to sporting events all over the province, I see myself there for a very specific purpose, but I also see myself as a tourist, and there are gaps in time I need to fill. So what are the experiences I can do when I'm by myself? What can I do when I'm with my wife? What can I do when I'm with my family? Telling those stories in a visual form and communicating it on social media, pushing it out, is critical, I believe, is the new and innovative way to push tourism. The last example I'll give is, we've all been to a hotel, we see the stack of pamphlets, and we're bewildered by how many options there are, but what do we often do? We go to the concierge and we say, what would you recommend? To eat, to do, I have this much time, what can I do tomorrow morning? And they tell the story. You're telling the story, and I think that is really what separates you from the crowd. And again, going back to the sporting thing, I think the marriage of the sport council with D M O is huge, because we're capturing them for a reason. They're coming here for a sporting event. Now, how do we fill their time? Or they come here for tourism, and we can allow them to enjoy some of the sporting and recreational opportunities. So I don't like to just give a bunch of comments without asking a question. Earlier, you were asked about the gap, and you answered that. What's the next opportunity? If that's a fair question, what's the next, and it can be small, but what's the next little thing that's going through Jace's head about tourism in Medicine Hat?
Oh, that's a dangerous question to ask, Counselor. If any of you, tonight or after, text our visitor center number with the number nine sixty. So let me read you the phone number really quickly. This is just our general local line for the visitor information center up at the highway, so if you don't scribble it down, that's fine, but it's four oh three, five two seven, six four two two. And I would invite you at some point to text that number and text it nine six zero, nine hundred and sixty. Nothing more, nothing less. Just text the number nine hundred and sixty and see what you get back. We are rolling out, and I suppose now this is the opportunity for me to make the announcement, we are this summer very excited to be rolling out visitor information services by text message. Data and research tells us the number of, just Canadian in general, not traveler or visitor or young or old, but Canadian in general prefers to do more and more of their correspondence by text. My mother will fight you tooth and nail about that, because she says, answer the phone. But everybody else is open to sending a text, particularly in a Travel Council experience, whereas a couple of years ago, we were waiting on the highway for them to come in. Okay? Now, we're by the highway and we're downtown, we're waiting for them to come in. Our roving allows us to go to where they are, but the text allows us to be wherever they are. And so when you text that number, you're going to hear back the significance of that number as it relates to the S A M S T P. You've got it. Excellent, fantastic. So we are in the process of planning and populating a menu of keywords that people can find on our website, on lamp posts, in our magazine, for new information. It's an opportunity for us to take people from the physical, literal world into a cellphone, a mobile-enabled digital world, and we can start to parlay back and forth. We can meet them where they want to be. That's the one that has been percolating, and we've been looking to frame, and we're rolling out this year, very much like the pop-up last year. We're going to see it. We're going to see. No one else is doing this in our region. I mean, there's Santa Clara, I think, or Stockton down in the States is doing this. Somebody in Portland's been doing it, but we'll be the only D M O from a tourism standpoint in Alberta or Canada that I'm familiar with, that is doing this. And we're going to see what that feels like and what that does for us, to dive into that awareness and consideration, and give us ideally another lever to move people from consideration to conversion, which is where our stakeholders make more money and improve their services and grow their space, which is a win for the community.
Just very quickly, Worship, we did not plan this, it wasn't coordinated, but I'm glad I asked the question, so, great answer.
Any other questions or comments? Can we get a motion for a reception?
So moved.
Second. We can vote? That was unanimous, thank you, Jace. If I could just interrupt and ask Isra to come back down here, we had a gift for you
Okay, moving along to our third and final presentation tonight, item four point three, is the Municipal Services Mill Rate Establishment Bylaw, four four six nine. Dennis Egot, who's our General Manager of Finance, will be presenting on this, and this is relation to item seven point four in your packets on page ninety-four.
Good evening, Your Worship and Counselors. This presentation is in support of the proposed tax rate bylaws in your package. And before I begin the presentation, I always like to lay the framework as to where this fits into the multiple steps of getting a tax notice mailed to property owners. So if you call back in January of two thousand and seventeen, council had prepared a two-year budget for two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, and included in that budget that was approved was the revenue requirement for two thousand and eighteen. The second step happened in February of this year, just a few months ago, where we prepared the actual assessments for each of the properties in Medicine Hat. And of course, the assessments are the basis on how we allocate that tax revenue. Later, we'll be considering and voting on the tax rate bylaws tonight, and then notices will be mailed out later in May, those are the tax notices, and payment will be due by the end of June, because of the weekend, at the end of June, it's actually due on July So let me start off with just providing an overview of where our tax rates are coming in this year. We have four classes of categories of property. Single-family, three point two five percent, multifamily, just over five percent, farmland, just over five percent, and the non-residential class, it's a reduction of point seven seven We have approximately twenty-nine thousand tax accounts in City of Medicine Hat. The larger majority of those tax accounts relate to the single-family classification, ninety, eighty-nine percent. Further, non-residential make up nine percent of tax accounts, and then both multifamily and farmland constitute one percent. Terms of tax revenue, and we have a tax revenue requirement on the municipal side of seventy-four million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, and you can see the distribution on the slide between the various classes of property. So single-family is fifty-nine point four percent. We have then, non-residential, being the next largest, at thirty-seven point two percent. Multifamily, three point two percent, and farmland at point zero zero nine percent. So that's the, how the revenue is allocated amongst those classes. This is a busy slide, but I just want to highlight a few things. This is the net municipal tax increase for two thousand and eighteen on the revenue side. As I mentioned, for two thousand and eighteen, we had, council had approved a revenue requirement of seventy-four million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand. That compares to two thousand and seventeen, seventy million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, so that's an increase of four point nine percent. And just a note, that that four point nine percent actually includes the budget amendment that was approved in November related to the transit service. Our budget was four percent, and so the four point nine percent is higher because of the budget amendment. We also have an assessment growth that we anticipated of a half a percent, and that's what we found as we were preparing the numbers for two thousand and eighteen. So we have also a half a percent of new assessment property growth during the year, which means, on a net increase, on a net basis, the net increase for, I'll say, the existing property owners, not the new growth during the year, is about four point four percent. That's a budget, against a budget of three point five percent. So that's the summary on the revenue side. This schedule highlights the actual proposed tax rates, and our proposed tax rates, this schedule includes the total tax rate. Of course, we have three components to our tax rate in Medicine Hat. We have the education portion that we are mandated to collect and remit to the province. We have the Cypress View Foundation, same, we're mandated to collect and remit back to the foundation. And then the third component is the municipal portion, and when you add all that together, you can see the increases from seventeen to eighteen that I had described earlier. I always like highlighting what these tax increases, what the result is to an average house, an average household. So what I have up on the slide is the tax impact for a median house. You can see in two thousand and seventeen, that median house in Medicine Hat was worth two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and we actually had a slight reduction in assessment value during the year of point four percent. So that average median household is now valued at two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred. On the right-hand side, you can see the combined tax rate for single-family homes of three point two five percent. So the total tax... So the total tax increase on, on a median house is approximately 2.8%. So for 2018, the total tax, 2,472. So that's an increase of approximately $68 per year. And I always like converting that to a monthly basis because that, that highlights it as well, $5.67 per month. I've also done the same for non-residential. Now, for non-residential, I've used a, just a value of, of a million dollars. And property owners on, in, in the non-residential side can easily do, do the math to take it to whatever the value their property has. That increase that we saw on the investment, on the assessment value was 1.1%. Now, applying a tax rate, I mentioned it was a actual decrease of 0.77%. So the total tax increase for non-residential class is about 0.3%. On the average, so for a benchmark $1 million property, that increase is approximately $61 a year, and on a monthly basis, that's $5.08. This is a graph that compares a single detached house in Medicine Hat, that would be property taxes, compared to other cities in Alberta and also some outside of Alberta. We've circled Lethbridge and Red Deer, those are two comparable municipalities that we benchmark against quite often. And you can see the arrow there pointing to Medicine Hat, that number is $2,287. And that's well below Lethbridge and, and Red Deer, and one of the lowest in, in Alberta. We do like this slide, this, this study is actually prepared by the city of Calgary and has a lot of comparisons, including this one. Another aspect of determining tax rates is to look at what a, what the tax ratio looks like. This particular tax ratio is the non-residential tax rate compared to the residential tax rate. This is a ratio that is available throughout Alberta for each municipality and gives us an indication of where we compare to some of other municipalities. So in this particular graph, you have tax ratios ranging from a low of Grand Prairie of 1.56 up to Calgary of 3.5. So again, the tax ratio is the non-residential tax rate compared to the residential tax rate. Our tax rate for 2017, which was last year, was 2.34. And you'll see in the next slide, we're proposing to decrease that to 2.30. This is the trend line for City of Medicine Hat, and this is the, the tax ratio. It shows the development of the tax ratio over time since 2002. You can see in 2002, we, we were increasing that ratio up through 2008. And since 2008, we've had about a 27% decrease in that ratio up to what we're recommending today of a ratio of 2.30. Now, it is, I, I would use caution in, in trying to compare to other municipalities in terms of these tax ratios because there's many things that influence the tax ratio. I've listed some of them here, including type and mix of industry, the economies of scale, how concentrated they are, relative values between cities, economic shift between classes, heavy industrial, light industrial, industrial versus residential, and the type of development restrictions that certain municipalities have. So although the, the tax ratio is, is useful to see where we compare, I would use some caution as each municipality is unique. And that is my presentation.
Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, if I could get a motion for reception?
So moved.
Second.
We could vote? That was unanimous, thank, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our public hearing with the bylaw attached for second and third readings, bylaw 4475. Bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 4168, the City of Medicine Hat land use bylaw on page 12, you'll find some background information. This is a rezoning for 513D Allowance Avenue Southeast, and I've received no submissions on this.
So we have to have a public hearing, and I will ask if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. I will ask a second time if you would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. A third and final time, which if you would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. All right, we will close the public hearing. If I can get a motion, second reading?
Motion, motion to accept this?
Uh, no, a motion to-
For a second reading, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Move that bylaw number 4475 be read a second time?
Second.
Any questions or comments? We could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I move that the bylaw be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? councillor McIntosh?
Thanks, your worship, just a quick question. So this is the second time we've dealt with a, one of these 24, 25 homes down in this region of the city. What is the move forward plan so they don't continue to have to come back dealing with the same issue?
Do we have an answer, or can we get, or let's get back, or?
Through the chair, we'll probably get back to you in terms of the timing of it, but I know we are, we are aware of the other 24, I believe, and it was an upzoning that happened with the wholesale changes to our land use bylaw a couple of years ago now. So yeah, we're aware of it and we're working on it. This one was expedited because I believe there's a sale forthcoming, and so they, you know, having it zoned the way it was, was an impediment to the pricing of the property.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on third reading? We could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
So this next item is our non-statutory public hear, uh, public hearing. It's here for approval because it's a proposed direct control development application. This is for 843 Industrial Avenue Southeast for an industrial storage yard. Again, we've done our due diligence on our advertising, and I've received no submissions on this item.
So if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this, please come down and state your name. I'll ask a second time if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this, please come down and state your name.
I'm for the development, I'm Dennis Madrick, I'm a co-owner of the property.
And I'll ask a third and final time if anybody else would like to come down and speak for or against? Did you want to say something, Dennis, or you just wanted to be, or take some questions I've asked?
No, if there's any questions, I can answer.
Any questions of Mr. Madrick? Right? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. You didn't want to speak, right? Okay, correct. Okay? So could, could I get a motion for adoption?
I'll make that motion for adoption.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you. Councillor Friesen?
Put this on, point of privilege if I could. I, I meant to do this earlier and I got caught up in the presentations. I just, if I could, I'd just like to say a few words on behalf of this council in honor of former mayor Garth Falely. I, I have known Garth personally for a long time, and, and this was a humanitarian, a business owner, a community volunteer extraordinaire, a philanthropist, a person who always thought the best of others and what their needs were and how they could be filled. I, I knew him as one of the founders of the Medicine Hat District Community Foundation. He was a board member and an executive director at United Way of Southern Alberta. He was one of the strong advocates and on the board of Palliative Care, the hospice now at St. Joe's. He was one of the huge drivers and advocates of our recently opened detox center, you know, some of these things you don't realize. Strong family person who adored his family and even caddied for two grandsons as they advanced their golf career through the years. He committed his own funds to initialize the development of an affordable housing, a development that didn't come through, but he was going to use his own money. Garth and his wife spent many years serving St. Vincent de Paul and, and those who needed it most. He was the mayor of Medicine Hat for two terms, the founder of our Canalta Center. And both councillor Dumansky and Hirsch on either side of me and myself served with Garth those two terms. Just a little funny story, you know, the longest council meetings in history were when we had Garth as mayor, and you know, we'd be down here and then we would go back upstairs to talk about stuff, and we had to have a special motion if we stayed past 11 o'clock. And we had several of those special motions over the years. So, you know, you, you remember that with fondness even though you were tired. So anyway, I just, I want to say we honor you, dear friend. We honor your incredible gifts to our community. Bless your soul and those you leave behind.
Thank you, well said. Councillor Hirsch, you?
Well, I just want to echo, and, and it really is a tragedy for the City of Medicine Hat. Quite frankly, I was, noticed the, the obituary in the paper, reached out to Mary Ann, and then quite frankly, didn't realize it was a private ceremony, but when I did give my regrets to, and certainly my, my profound condolences to Mary Ann and the family, she just indicated it would have been Garth's wish to have a bit, bit more of a, he was such a humble man, and they looked at more of a private one, just, but, but quite frankly, the, the place from which the funeral would have been held would have been just massively adorned with people that really had a lot of support and, and admiration for our previous mayor, so I just want to give him my respect.
Thank you, councillor Dumansky.
Your worship, just to add what's already been said, I had the privilege of serving with Garth for two terms, my first two terms around this table, and, you know, when you, when you come, you are, you become, you represent the public, but you become a little bit of the fabric of whom you're surrounded by. And Garth was one of those people, larger than life, literally and figuratively, who, who had his heart at the corner of this community at all times. And one of the comments I said publicly and I've said privately as well is that the, it was difficult if ever to disagree with Garth, not because you were intimidated or fearful of, of being on the offside with him, but because he, he made it, he was very, very careful about ensuring that everybody's voice was heard, and he recognized that everyone around the table came with the, the greatest privilege of, of representing the community, and he respected the fact that there would be differences of opinion, but he never made you ever feel offside or that there was going to be any repercussion for, for not aligning or agreeing with him. Very much about this community and as has already been communicated, played many roles outside of being around this table, and he gave, he gave many of his best years probably around this table, and I know he had some health issues and, and he wasn't able to continue, but he, he continued on, he soldiered on, him and Mary Ann, and he, he leaves a legacy around this table and in this community, and we won't miss him.
Thank you, well said.
Okay, moving on now to reports, our first report's item 7.1 on page 27. You'll find the Development and Infrastructure Committee meeting April 4th. This report is for adoption information with items one and two for adoption, which is the revised pricing for ranchlands, Southland River Flats, and Head of Land Cypress County Water Booster.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report's item 72, page 67, Energy and Utilities Committee meeting April 5th. This report's just for information.
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's just for information, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next item is 7.3 on page 68, you'll find the Audit Committee meeting of April 10th with adoption and information with the reappointment of KPMG for adoption.
Worship make a motion for adoption and information as the case may be.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councillor Samrush?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for the CAO, actually. I was wondering with auditors for the city, is there common practice or best practice to change auditors every, every few years? And I was just wondering where we are with that cycle? Thank you.
Through the chair, yes, we go out for RFP on, on a regular basis. I believe we had a three-year contract with options to review two years, and we would be in the second last year. Yeah, a total of five years. So anyway, we will be going back out at some point when that, when that option to renew is exhausted.
Just a follow-up, but after that, you know, after their current contract comes up, would they still be eligible to bid on the contract again, or would we specifically look for somebody other than, other than this company?
No, they're certainly eligible to, to apply, it's an open process.
Councillor Turnbull?
Just like to thank the CAO for the 405 pages, it was delightful reading till late in the night and to sit through the three and a half hour meeting for audit. Mr. Hirsch and I were extremely pleased with the detail of which you produced, so thank you so much.
Councillor Hirsch?
In fairness and, and point noted, but having said that, I actually just want to send out my heartfelt congratulations in regards to some of the material that gets sent out. I believe we are an annual recipient from the GFOA, I believe, in terms of our financial reporting. During committee, I think we complimented staff in regards to, certainly the report is so easy to read with a lot of did you know facts that quite honestly, I didn't even know as a hat or myself, so very, very pleased to see again such a great amount of work putting into it, and, and hopefully we see another award come our way.
Thank you, councillor Turnbull.
Thank you, your worship. Little humor is always good to keep us all smiling and keep us grounded, but I, I do agree with councillor Hirsch, although it was 505 pages, it was well laid out, it was, the presentation was excellent by your Commissioner of Corporate Services, so yes. It's always a pleasure to look at numbers when they make sense, and it was a great job, so pass it on, please, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Friesen.
Well, I, yes, it's an excellent report, full of lots of information and a long-time reading, I agree. I, I just want to ask for a, maybe a sort of a general opinion about the 2017 long-term debt outstanding, it's on page 27, 76, pardon me, in your report tonight. And you can see that it's grown fairly significantly from 2013 to 2017. I realize you're going to tell me that we're well within limits, so I'm not afraid that way, but I, I wonder, I, I think for people looking at this report, I would want to understand better. Is this a fear? Is this, is this normal? Is it because we're growing as a city? Is it because we're out of control? I, I just wonder if, if our CAO could give us a few overall comments about that.
Through the chair to councillor Friesen. Yes, our debt has certainly grown. Now, we've had some big discrete pieces that have been put on there. So we borrowed 10 million for unit 16 in Jenko. Jenko has not previously been in the habit of attracting much debt, but that was a choice that was made in order to build that unit. We borrowed 10 million for the Canalta Center, so that was another big single piece that was in there. We borrowed, I believe, about 5 million for the Viner Center. So there's been some discrete big pieces come on, both on the utility side and on the municipal side. And, and, you know, traditionally, we've added most of the debt on the utility side, but a couple of those pieces specifically, of course, pertain to the, to the municipal side. Now, when we look at our debt ceiling, the fact that we've come closer to our debt ceiling is just as much because we've had a reduction in revenues as it is that we've had an increased debt. But, but when you just look at the debt as it sits, yes, 321.3 million is an increase in debt. Now, we have built, we built the past budget and we will build this coming budget on the assumption that we will not be increasing our debt level overall. And so I believe we can execute the upcoming capital programs and stay within the same kind of debt ratios as we have up to now. So I don't see it as an increasing trend that will keep increasing. A lot of the increases we had were sort of discrete, one-off projects that were pretty unique. And of course, we're also paying back debt as we move through this. And of course, we're also paying back debt as we move through this. So, is it concerning? Yes. Is it worrisome to the point of thinking that we're going to hit our debt ceiling? No, I don't believe so.
Okay, just a follow-up if I could. So, it's, some of the other areas are more understandable, the blue area at the top, would that, which is general, classified as general, would that include the Canalta and the senior center and a few other of those, those things that aren't part of our normal year-on-year expenses? Okay, so there and that blue part, that's the part that concerned me most. Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I don't mean to correct my CAO, but it was 55 million for the generator, not 10. Yeah, yeah, you had, in 10, you were correct on the other ones. So, that's a very, very large, yeah. Councillor Hirsch?
Well, your worship, we did have that discussion in terms a little bit about the debt during our meeting. The reality is, quite frankly, is prior councils had large capital projects that they worked on. And to quote our mayor, we are now in a case, we are a want for nothing. And, you know, this council, quite frankly, the fact that we don't have any major capital projects give me a little bit more ease in terms of, Councillor Friesen's observation in terms of our debt load. We've got a strategic plan that within the priorities talks about fiscal responsibility. So, I think we're coming along on that page as well. We're looking at any type of economic development that we can do within this community. And of course, as the community grows, that certainly is an effect on our revenues as well. The fact of the matter is as well, we do get judged on the revenue in terms of our two times in terms, as far as the MGA goes. So, I'm a little bit concerned if we have declining revenues, that by virtue of that alone, that'll drive up our debt ceiling or percent, if you will. But I'm very comfortable that administration and staff have got a keen eye on everything. And I'm very comfortable when we were in our committee meeting that things are fine. And as far as the capital projects, I don't see anyone down the road. So, very, I think this is the trough right here.
Thank you, Councillor Turnbull.
Thank you, worship. To, I think the other thing that we have to recognize is that almost over 80% of our total, total debt is rate-based utilities. And for years and years, when our city was blessed with oil and gas and electrical profits, unfortunately, we didn't do as much of the infrastructure needs that we should have. Now that the, the price of natural gas has affected NGPR in a very tough, tough way and also our dividend in a very tough way, we have to recognize that we are in a catch-up. And so, I think it's really interesting that, that we can continue to, well, for instance, sorry, the point I was trying to make is that the $55 million that we spent for the new generation was a business expense. We made a business case that this is now coming true, as you knew with Hut 8 that we announced a few weeks ago. So, sometimes you have to borrow money in business in order to, to ensure that you can continue to operate. Very few businesses operate on pure cash. Everyone, all businesses have some sort of line of credit at the bank or in fact, they have debt. So, I think that, that we are seeing turnaround at Jenko. The forecast this year is to make a profit, which we didn't do two years ago. NGPR is working very hard, tiny profit, not a lot, but a tiny profit. Has made some great, great decisions to, to, yes, our income's going lower, but so was our cost to operate in NGPR. So, I wouldn't, Councillor Friesen, worry too much at this time. I think that we do have to be prudent. We do have to continue to be fiscally responsible and look at ways in which we can operate our city on a, in a more productive and efficient manner in order to try to keep our debt limits to livable amounts. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on this report? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our next report is item 7.4 on page 94. You'll find the Corporate Services Committee meeting minutes of April 10th, and this is for adoption.
I move that report for adoption as indicated.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on to reports for reception. 8.1 on page 112. You'll find the MPC meeting minutes from March the 28th.
I move this report for reception.
Second.
Comments? All right, if we could call the question? That was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on now to bylaws for second and third readings. Item 9.1 on page 117. You'll find bylaw 4473, bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to repeal bylaw 4226, adventure borrowing bylaw. Receive no submissions on this bylaw.
Could I go for a second reading?
Your worship, I said bylaw 4473, be read a second time.
Second that.
Questions, comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
This time, your worship, I said bylaw 4473, be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that.
Questions? If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
New bylaws, item 10. These bylaws can go with unanimous consent for all three readings tonight. First one is item 10.1 on page 119, bylaw 4469, bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to authorize council to impose a property tax for the year 2018 and to exempt certain property from taxation for the year 2018.
Your worship, I seek leave of council to introduce bylaw 4469 and ask that it be read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Like to ask that bylaw 4469 be read a second time.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, if we could call the question? That was unanimous, thank you.
I'd ask for unanimous consent of council to proceed to third reading.
Unanimous consent for third reading.
Consent.
Second.
If we could vote? You have consent?
I said bylaw 4469 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions, comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next bylaws, item 10.2, page 124. Bylaw 4471, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to authorize council of the city to impose a 2018 supplementary property tax. Again, with unanimous consent, this can go for all three readings.
Pardon me, your worship, which page? I'm having technical issues.
We are 120, page 124, item 10.2.
Bylaw 4471.
Your worship, I said bylaw, I'd seek leave of council to introduce bylaw 4471 and ask that be read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I said bylaw 4471 be read a second time.
Second.
Questions? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I'd ask for unanimous consent of council to proceed to third reading for bylaw 4471.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
And finally, I'd ask that bylaw 4471 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments on third reading? If we could vote? And, Councillor Turnbull? That was unanimous, thank you.
Item 10.3, page 126. Bylaw 4472, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to provide for the rate of tax payable for the year 2018 in respect of the city's center development area. Once again, this can go for all three readings with unanimous consent.
I'd like to seek leave of council to introduce bylaw 4472 and ask that it be read a first time.
Second.
Call the question? That was unanimous, thank you.
I'd like to ask that bylaw 4472 be read a second time.
Second.
Any questions or, Councillor Turnbull?
Yes, your worship, I have concerns with the CCDA and how we've been operating for the businesses downtown. I recognize that this bylaw is for the right to tax the members of the Downtown Business Association, but the city also matches that grant up to, I think, $100,000. We talk about being fiscally responsible and nobody gets any bonuses on 13th Street or Kingsway or Dunmore, 13th Street, sorry, Division Avenue, Southridge Strack. All businesses have to stand on their own. I recognize that originally, when we got into this, it was to, to help develop and help to promote downtown shopping. I get that. But I think it's time, members of council, that we take a hard look at how this operates. Are we getting the best bang for our buck here? And I've talked to several, in fact, a lot of businesses in downtown who don't like the tax rate. They don't think that they're getting value for their taxes as members of that. So, I think it might be something that perhaps Corporate Services, Councillor Dumanowski, that at some point, we could open up the discussion and say, is this still something that we can continue to support? Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Councillor Samrush?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to respond to some of Councillor Turnbull's comments. Just for a little background information, the CCDA's budget comes from two portions. There's, there's this tax on downtown businesses that was initiated by the people of downtown in 1985. So, that part is, is kind of out of our hands here. Now, they could always change their mind on this, but until they do, we collect it on their behalf. The other part of it is the city grant that we give to them and certainly that's a discussion that we can have around this, this table here. But yeah, I mean, the CCDA just went through a strategic planning process and we, we feel good about where we're at and the steps that we're going to have in our future. But of course, I mean, our entire goal is to provide value, value to the people of downtown. Thank you.
Councillor Dumanowski?
Worship, this isn't really the time to speak to it, but since it's been brought up, I will say, not necessarily in defense of CCDA, but I think Councillor Samrush said it well. I mean, they, under the Municipal Government Act, they have the right to form a downtown business revitalization zone, otherwise known as CCDA, and collect a grant or a tax that they can use for their own purposes. The portion that we give, in many ways, is an allocation based on past council and community desires. As an example, one was the beautification, so baskets and the planters and whatnot. We used to take care of those and there was provision for funds because they felt they could do it for cheaper amounts, so that was handed over. There are also different festivals, different items of that nature, community pride events of sorts that the community of downtown host, a variety of different ones, from the Chalk Festival to a number of other ones. They do things for the Easter break and all that. I'm definitely not picking on other areas of the city that you identified. I'm not, I can't think of many festivals that they host. So, there are, there are balancing wheels and cogs that go into place here. And I'm not necessarily defending the grant we give, but we are, we have, as a past council, and I can speak to that because I've been here, have said, based on commentary from the public, we want to see a vibrant downtown. It's one thing to tell the merchants and owners down there to, to subscribe to that mindset and, and make suggestions, but if we're not going to back it with some form of granting, then, then it's probably going to be nothing but lip service paid. So, I, again, it's not the time. We definitely need to open that conversation up and it's one that comes back and forth over the years and it's one that deserves scrutiny and review. But there are reasons why they exist and why there's a collection of funds for them, not only from, unto themselves in the form of a tax that is put in place by the, by the downtown owners themselves. But the city has made a grant for the purpose of promotion and cultural experiences and just bring in a lively downtown to life. So, so it's definitely a conversation we can have at a future point.
Thank you, Councillor Turnbull.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Councillor Dumanowski. I guess I'd say that the people on Kingsway, if they had $100,000, perhaps they would bring lots of culture to Kingsway or to Dunmore Road. So, it's always easy to say we're promoting this when somebody's writing you a check. All I'm asking is, look, I want downtown to continue. We pour a lot of money into helping businesses down there to revitalize their properties, to fix, you know, to build above their buildings and do other things to promote traffic downtown. I'm just saying is that I, for me, all non-residential folks, taxpayers should be treated the same way. And so, I just think the time is to hear for discussion, but I do appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, so, any other questions or comments on this? I mean, really, we passed their budget already. We really have to, this is a flow-through bylaw that we're going to collect the tax on behalf of the business owners, for the business owners. So, I think the grant discussion is something we can have at another time. And it has come up, oh, every, about 10 years that I've been here, I'm going to say, so, yeah. I think, second reading? Any other questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
I'd ask for unanimous consent to move to third reading of bylaw 4472.
Second.
If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
I'd ask that bylaw 4472 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Received no notice of motion, so we'll move on to new business. Our first item of new business, item 12.1 is page 128. It's our 2017 City of Medicine Hat Financial Statements and these for adoption.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Next items, 12.2, page 244. You'll find the Cannabis Public Engagement Survey Report, and this is for information.
I move this report for information.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? Oh, Councillor Turner?
Thank you, your worship. I just have a question through to probably Commissioner Swartzenberger. Do we know where we're going now and how long the timeframe might be by the time we get our bylaws in place? Now that we've completed the survey, I see a few of the other cities, I think Calgary just announced their bylaw, I think, last week. So, I'm just wondering what the timeframe might be or do we anticipate that'll be coming to council?
Through the chair, we're tracking towards having those bylaws in front of council in June. Probably the second meeting in June.
Good. Thanks, Councillor Samrush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a point of clarification about the results of the survey here. I know sometimes when I talk to people about the survey, there's the impression that council is bound by some of the things that we find, find here. And I think the purpose of this survey was to talk to the community and see how they felt about this issue, which is one piece of something that we're going to consider this when we, when we talk about the cannabis bylaw. So, it is very helpful for us, but we are not bound by it. Thank you.
Correct. Councillor Dumanowski?
Just a brief, a brief observation. I can't speak tonight. When we're talking about the number of participants in a survey, I mean, we've had a number of them go through our committee and not so many years ago, we'd get very little response on finding and hearing and responding to the upsurge or increase of participants who participate in the online fashion, over 7,000 responses. This is a conversation that definitely will get the public going as far as those who are for or against it, but to see an overall response rate of 11% is quite impressive. I did hear on the news Calgary did a similar one. I think they had 2% or something of that line. So, it was, you know, nice to see that we are, we have a public stakeholder who's engaged and interested in and is using the, and taking the, and taking advantage of the opportunity to give their opinion on these very important topics.
Counsel Friesen?
Well, I just want to add, I don't think, in fact, I think it's a good thing not to be the first out of the gate with one of these. I've really, I've read everything I can on this and what other cities are doing, and their deliberations around their bylaws and their considerations and so on. And I found it to be a real learning experience. So, we don't want to be last either. But I think, take into consideration this incredible number of responses and what we've learned from other communities and their development. I think we're going to end up with a pretty good piece of legislation. So, I don't mind that we're not there yet. I think it's, it's a journey, and it's one of learning. So, I think we're on the right, we're on the right path.
Thank you. Counsel Hirsch?
Well, just in response to some of the comments, so at MPC, we asked specifically where staff were doing in relative to other municipalities. I was very comforted with the idea that other, the municipalities themselves have been working together in terms of, of trying to, trying to understand best practices, legislation. I mean, this is coming at us pretty fast, and we're all trying to get our feet underneath us. But I was really, really comforted in the fact that the municipalities are leaning on each other, the dates and the times of introduction of legislation. We talked about the, the physical locations at MPC. Of course, that's going to come later on, is where people can have this activity. That's for a later date and will, but I've been reassured on multiple occasions that we are right on path, and I'm very happy in terms of where we're headed right now.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, moving along now to our first add-on to the agenda, item 12.3. And this is changes to the organizational reporting of health, safety, and environment and emergency management and the natural gas and petroleum resources departments. And Counsel Hirsch will speak to this.
Your worship, I move that city council approves, A, a realignment of the reporting line for the HSE department to report directly to the Commissioner of Corporate Services; B, a realignment of, for the NGPR department to report directly to the Commissioner of Utilities; C, renaming the Utilities Division the Energy and Utilities Division; and finally, D, direct staff to bring forward the administrative organizational bylaw for amendment.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous. Thank you.
And our last add-on to the agenda tonight is item 12.4. This is a decision item for adoption, and it's the off-site levy municipal development, municipal development subsidy for Aurora Cannabis, Inc.
Who is going to, we have not decided that?
Nope.
So, okay.
I will make the motion.
Is it, is there more to this motion than just this briefing note? Okay. All right. CAO?
Through the Chair to follow the same process as you did with the other add-on. Perhaps the recommendation should be read out, just so it's really clear for the record.
Do you mind reading the recommendation?
Sure.
I don't think I can.
We're asking council to approve the following decision. A, approve the following approach to municipal assist for off-site levies specific to proposed parcels 1, 2, and 3 in the Aurora Cannabis, Inc.'s submission. Parcel 1, at plus or minus 23 hectares, 72% city contribution to the off-site levies. Number 2, parcel 2, plus minus 5 hectares, 1,000 city, 1,000, sorry, 100% city contribution to the off-site levies. Parcel 3, plus or minus 8 hectares, city contribution to be determined at the time of future development. Also, to approve the following approach to the payment of municipal reserve money in place of land. Parcel 1, plus or minus 23 hectares, 100% city contribution. Parcel 2, plus or minus 5 hectares, 100% city contribution. And parcel 3, plus or minus 8 hectares, 0% city contribution. Also, to approve a budget amendment of $6.6 million to fund the city's municipal assist portion, as outlined above, from the Community Capital Reserve, and to direct administration to prepare our municipal assist program update to accommodate significant developments and to provide additional tools to achieve strategic priorities.
Okay, could I get that, someone, you need to remove that?
I'll, that was, that's more appropriate. I will remove that.
Okay. And a seconder, if I could? Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? All right, if we could vote? And that was unanimous. Thank you. Seeing no more business before this council, we're adjourned. I'm going to ask if the representatives from Aurora would like to come down to council chambers and speak to the media, if you have a statement. And of course, council and staff will be available as well.